I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting, which has been duly posted to order. And at this time, I'd like to call upon Mayor Burkin Tim, Danny Castillo, and someone he's to lead us in the indication.
Father, we thank you for the privilege we have as Americans and as citizens to gather together and to make decisions that impact our communities for the better. We pray for your wisdom, your guidance, and all that we do tonight. We pray for our city staff and for all those in our public service throughout our nation, whether they're here or abroad, that you protect them, that you be with them at all times. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon to all of you. I want to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. Thank you for coming out. First item on the agenda is the public announcement of events.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I'm here to report and to invite you to our upcoming City of Harlingen events. On September the 7th, Saturday, Harlingen Recycling Center is hosting Fall Electronics Recycling Day, and the City of Harlingen is hosting the Seche de Sempre Festival and Civic Ceremony on September the 15th at the Lanta Hill Park and Municipal Auditorium. March of Dimes 5K Run is scheduled September 21st at the Lanta Hill Park. We have our second annual for the zombie run, runs are hosted by Mid Valley Events. The City of Harlingen is helping them, and it's going to be on October the 5th on a Saturday at the Arroyo Park. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I hope everybody will come out and enjoy and participate in all of these events, in particular the SCS celebration, which is going to be a bigger and bigger event for us every year. Item two is the proclamation proclaiming September 17th through the 23rd, 2013 as Constitution Week. And I know we have some folks from the Brothers of American Revolution here, and I'd like them to join us up here. Anne Roberts is the chair for Lieutenant, Lieutenant Thomas Marloch, but I want you to just kind of line up over here and face that direction. You've got to take a picture of them. It'll be on the city's website.
My fault.
But this is a great thing that we do every year. It's because of the work that you all do and reminding us to honor our Constitution. And so we have a proclamation. And I'll now read it. It says, "Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America is the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law, whereas September 17, 2013 marks the 226th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by a Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law, 915, guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through the 23rd, 2013 as Constitution Week. And therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through September 23, 2013 as Constitution Week in the City of Harlingen, and hereby ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties." Again, we want to thank you all for making sure that we remember this important anniversary every year and the importance of this document. It's something that we should not take for granted, and this helps remind us of the importance of it. And thank you for the work that you do. And I'm glad that I'll also be able to celebrate my son's birthday on September 17.
We do have a display put up at the public library. If you get a chance, I'd like you to go by and look at that. And don't forget that the Bill of Rights is an important part of the Constitution. It would not have been approved without the Bill of Rights. So we've got a little moment for you. The wife really.
All right. Thank you very much. This has a value of less than $100. Then I gratefully accept this.
I'd like to also say that the schools are supposed to, by law, celebrate Constitution Week, and we have a number of websites and tools that can help the schools to celebrate that. So if anyone is involved with the schools, we will be forwarding some information to them, but please know that we would be glad to forward that information as well.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Charlie can fix it for our story. So I have to pick it up.
Oh, really? Come on, Charlie. Charlie can get it in there.
Oh, can you? You can give it to camera.
I tried to look in there. Okay, let's see.
Really, you'll catch it.
See if I can get this up in there. Hold on. Okay. On the count of three. One, two, three. It came up busy.
Oh, busy?
You want to try it again? Hold on, I'm going to try it again. On the count of three. One, two, three. What's that you want to borrow?
Give him a filter on Charles.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Next item is another very special item for the City of Harlingen and the Police Department, and it is the presentation and announcement of the Harlingen Police Department's accomplishment in achieving recognized status for compliance with the Texas Law Enforcement Agency Best Practices Recognition Program.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and citizens of Harlingen. Good evening. My name is Marlon Price. I'm an old retired police chief from up north Texas, but I'm also the director of the Texas Law Enforcement Best Practices Program. Now, that's a mouthful, but I want to tell you in just a moment, give you a little bit of information about that. The Texas Police Chiefs Association is made up of over 1,000 professional law enforcement executives throughout our state dedicated to improving law enforcement services. I flew down from Dallas this evening to have the honor of presenting to the Harlingen Police Department a certificate of recognition for achieving compliance with the best business practices in law enforcement. Several years ago, the Texas Chiefs Association developed an accreditation program for Texas law enforcement. Many of you know about accreditation programs. Schools, universities, hospitals, all are accredited, and the common denominator there is they have to meet a set of professional standards. The Texas Law Enforcement Best Practices Program has 165 standards that cover the full range of law enforcement operations. Everything from the use of force, the protection of citizen rights, vehicle pursuits, officer training, arrest, search and seizure, property and evidence management, patrol, and investigative operations, everything that law enforcement does in Texas, these standards cover those issues. This program has become the new gold standard for law enforcement in Texas, and agencies across the state are trying desperately to meet these standards. Only a few months ago, the Harlingen Police Department began their process of proving their compliance with these standards. They have to prove their compliance to independent assessors, not just internally, not just with their pals. So this is a voluntary program. No one forced them into it. Neither was it easy to comply. They had to do a complete audit of all their policies, procedures, their training, their operations, everything, to meet these standards. The process culminated in August when two trained assessors, other police chiefs from other parts of the state, came in to do an onsite inspection of the department. They interviewed staff, inspected facilities, rode with field officers, ensured compliance with all of the standards. Their report was sent to the recognition committee, and that's a committee comprised of nine active-serving police chiefs around our state. And they read the report and voted to abort recognized status to Harlingen Police Department. That vote was unanimous. During this process, the Harlingen Police Department has proven that it meets or exceeds all of our standards. There are currently over 2,600 law enforcement agencies in our state, and only 84 have met the grade. And tonight, we officially recognize the Harlingen Police Department as the 84th recognized agency, and I might add, the first agency in the Rio Grande Valley to become a recognized agency. What does this mean to you? The recognition program assures city management and the council and the citizens of Harlingen that your police department is operating in a manner that reflects the current best practices in law enforcement. This means your police department is one of the very best in the state. But this is not the end. They have to continue to prove their compliance. They must send in annual reports. Four years from now, we'll be back to do another onsite inspection to make sure that they are still meeting those standards. Your police department during this process has proven to independent assessors that they are one of the best in the state, and you should be very proud of their accomplishment.
Actually, if we could get all of the members of the department that are here, if you'd come up here and join them.
I have to, I usually try and read this, but it's got a lot of flattery language on it. And what it means, Chief, is you've got an outstanding police department. You should be very proud of that.
I am. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
If I could just real quick, I was going to recognize our team, and certainly there's a lot of officers sworn and civilian alike that showed up, and we couldn't have done it without them. But our accreditation and recognition team is led by Deputy Chiefs Luciano Rubio, Sergeant John Parish, and Investigators Ray Zalua and George Nava. And although we formally enrolled in the program, like Mr. Price said, six months ago, we've actually been actively working on it for about a year, and it's them that we're digging in, making sure that our policies and practices matter and they need to. And again, we couldn't have done it without everybody's help, and certainly all of our civilians. Diane runs our communication system, our center. Anyway, we couldn't have done it without them, so on behalf of everybody, thank you very much.
Now, on behalf of the commission, I want to congratulate each and every member of the team, that's the entire department. And Chief, I think this is a great, not just a great recognition, but it's a real testimony to the fact that Harlingen does have a great police department. It's well-run, it's professionally run, and that you're striving to be the best that you can be. That's just a great thing for any city to have a great organization like yours. So we congratulate, recognize, and thank each and every member of the department.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming down to make the presentation. Appreciate it. Thanks. Item four, approval of the minutes of the last 17, 2013 regular meetings. Is there any corrections or additions?
Yeah, I had a question on it. Trying to find the page. It showed that we went out to executive session at 6:30, 6:20. Then it says we came back out at 6:38, and it says we went back out at 7:39, then back in at 7:40. Does that sound right? We went into executive session for one minute?
What page were you?
On the very last two pages. Page nine and 10. This shows we were only out for one minute. Just wanted to make sure that that was.
I don't recall that meeting even lasting until 7:40, did it?
Yeah, I remember. As we were talking about the item number 19 with the Union Pacific Railroad, but I don't remember it lasting only one minute. So according to this, we would have gone out in executive session twice.
Why don't we ask the city secretary to check the tape?
Right. And then otherwise, I make a motion. We've really missed.
Subject 20, correction on about when we will be and brief debate after she checks the tape. Is her motion approved then?
I made the motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose like sign, motion carries. All right. Item 5A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J are the consent agendas. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose like sign, motion carries. All right. Item 6, discussion regarding bids received on the file on properties struck off to Cameron County for itself and other taxing jurisdictions from a tax resale conducted on July 2nd, 2013. Legal descriptions, blocks 41 and 42, block 1, L and F, in addition, as amended, City of Harlingen, Cameron County, Lot 1, Block 108, original town site, City of Harlingen, Cameron County, Lot 5, Block 1, Expressway subdivision, Section 1, in addition to the City of Harlingen, Cameron County, Tracks 1, Lot 10, 11, and 12, Block 29, Finnwood, Height Addition, City of Harlingen, Cameron County, Track 1, Lot 117, Block 3, Spanish Acres, in addition to Cameron County, and Track 1, Lot 118, Block 3, Spanish Acres, in addition to Cameron County. Hello.
Hi, good afternoon.
Welcome.
Well, I know that you all have already received the packet of information concerning the properties that are up for, that were up for resale. And we just wanted to give you a brief description of what the resale process consists of. Essentially, these properties were offered at the tax resale on July 2nd of 2013 after they were struck off on the tax roll when, at the original tax sale, no minimum bid was met. Now, the minimum bid at the original tax sale is the lesser of two things, either the appraised value of the property or what is due in taxes and costs. At the time that no minimum bid is met, the property is struck off, becomes ownership of all of the taxing entities who have interest in the property, in this case Cameron County, City of Harlingen, Harlingen ISD. And each thereafter would have to approve any amount that is offered for the property so that we could move forward into conveying the property into a new owner. Our recommendation tonight is to approve these bids, because at the time that the properties are struck off, they are no longer incurring any tax liability, and by conveying them to the new owners who have now proposed these bids, they'll get put back onto the tax roll. They assume responsibility for the property and also assume the tax liability.
All right. Are there any questions? This is a discussion item. The next item is the item to approve resolution.
Yeah, I have a question. Do you come once a year with this, or is this semi-annual? How is this?
We usually hold a tax sale about, a tax resale, I'm sorry, about once a year. We hold a tax sale about three or four times out of the year. But we will usually hold a resale come November. What we try to do is take all of those properties that didn't sell throughout the year and offer them at a resale.
Okay. Any other questions or any other discussion? We'll go to item 7, consider possible action to approve resolutions approving bids received on the tax resale conducted on July 2nd, 2013 for the Everver's properties. Is there a motion to approve the resolutions?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose like sign, motion carries. Out of main discussion, possible pay increase for non-serviced employees.
Yeah, I asked for this to be on the agenda so that Carlos and staff can prepare for next year, look at, look at the different numbers. And I don't know municipal law, if bonuses are allowed, or incentives, or anything of that sort, but to think now 13 months in advance, not two or three months in advance, and give us some information and give us some guidance.
Okay, that's a good idea.
That was it?
Yeah, that's a good idea. All right. Very good.
We did it this way. That way we could have, we could discuss it without being worried about a quorum. We can discuss it in here, and we give Carlos the direction for that main reason.
Okay.
This direction that is for?
Start thinking about, I noticed Mercedes is doing bonuses rather than raises because of this high dependence on sales dollars for the revenue.
For like long-term lump sums type of a?
Just allow us to discuss that we can give him some direction, again, without worrying about walking quorum, that we can talk it out in the open, of maybe flat cost is good for certain times, and then for alternatives. We don't want to go where we're skipping years and not giving out raises. But if we have a tight year, and we start anticipating it, we should have a plan of action that says that, well, in lieu of those raises, if the things improve, we should be prepared to give out a bonus to compensate those employees for getting us back out of the hole.
You just want to know what things are allowable.
Right. And to think ahead, we have now almost 13 months to think of stuff.
Okay. That sounds like a good strategy. So that'll be the direction of the staff to start thinking about this issue and give us a little more time to discuss it in advance of your budget.
I think that was good, just to clarify that, because I know I got a couple of questions from people that contacted me about, you know, was that going to be something that we're looking at as far as some change in our approach to this upcoming fiscal year? But that's not the case. What we're talking about is opening up some discussions, some directions to staff, to look at what are the options that we could maybe entertain for the following fiscal year, and fiscal years to come.
Okay, very good. Then we'll move on to item 9, which is consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading adopting the City of Harlingen's budget for fiscal year 2013-14 by a record vote.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. After two budget workshops and a budget hearing, we are ready to present budget to you in ordinance. Now, effective September 1st, Senate Bill 656 was passed, and this year we have to adopt a budget by a record vote rather than the way we normally do. So I want to make that clear first. Now, before you, you have the budget ordinance in Exhibit 8, which lists all the funds by fund, and then as a total, which is what we present the ordinance, our revenues are Now, this is just all the funds other than the Harlingen Downtown Fund, the Development Corporation, Community Development, Harlingen Water Works, Valley International Airport, and those are under a separate resolution. I will be glad to answer any questions to my staff regarding the budget.
Yes, you said new law passed September 1.
It's effective September 1. It's House Bill 656.
Okay. And what does that mean?
Senate bill, I'm sorry.
You said a record vote.
Uh-huh, which means that you have to vote individually so that we can record the vote by which commissioner voted.
Like a roll call?
Like a roll call.
I'll call each commissioner.
They refer to it as a record vote, because it becomes part of the record.
Okay. This is a, all right. This is a good budget, and this is a budget that includes a 3% of gross payroll raise for our employees, also reinstates some street paving we had had to eliminate the last couple of years because of the budget constrictions, and gets us, gets us to where we want to be without a tax rate increase.
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a, I need to, we need to read the caption.
An ordinance adopting the revenue and expenditures budget for the City of Harlingen, Texas for the fiscal year 101st, 2013 through September 30th, 2014, amount $66,246,855 and $67,903,114 expected, providing for publication of the caption of this ordinance and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution as read.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Mesmar, seconded by Commissioner Leal. Is there any discussion? If not, then I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Castillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gilmore.
Aye.
Commissioner Mesmar.
Aye.
Commissioner Leal.
Aye.
And Commissioner Sanchez is not here, so the motion carries. Item 10, consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading adopting the 2013 Adblock Tax Rate for Maintenance and Operations for fiscal year 2013-14.
Okay. After adopting the budget in first reading, we are ready to set the tax rate. This is done in two parts, MNO and INS. The first part is MNO, and we've set it at .449723. And with the INS, the total would be .588827, which is the same as it has been for the last few years. No increase. This is also part of the Senate Bill 656, and it also has to be done as a record vote. Would you like to answer any questions?
Would you read the caption?
An ordinance fixing the Adblock Tax Rate for Maintenance and Operations for the City of Harlingen, Texas for the calendar year 2013 at $0.449723 per $100 valuation, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Leal, seconded by Commissioner Castillo. Is there any discussion? Then I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Castillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gilmore.
Aye.
Commissioner Mesmar.
Aye.
Commissioner Leal.
Aye.
And Commissioner Sanchez is absent. All right. Motion carries. I want to congratulate the staff and the commission for putting this budget together and keeping our tax rate level actually in a really good place. So this is not an easy process that we go through every year, and a lot of late hours with the staff trying to make this fit.
Aye.
Commissioner Leal.
Aye.
And Commissioner Sanchez is not present. Item 11, consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading adopting the 2013 Adblock Tax Rate for Interest and Seeking fiscal year 2013-14.
Okay, again, this is the second part, and it is .139104, which again, added to the MNO totals to .588827. And again, we have to follow Senate Bill 656 and record the vote.
Good. City Attorney, would you read the captions, please?
An ordinance fixing the Adblock Tax Rate for Interest and Seeking Payments for the City of Harlingen, Texas for the calendar year 2013 at $0.139104 per $100 valuation, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Leal, seconded by Commissioner Castillo. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote. Commissioner Castillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Yulhorn.
Aye.
Commissioner Mesmar.
Aye.
Commissioner Leal.
Aye.
And Commissioner Sanchez is absent. All right, motion carries. I want to congratulate the staff and the commission for putting this budget together and keeping our tax rate level actually in a really good place. So this is not an easy process that we go through every year, and a lot of late hours with the staff trying to make this fit together and work and make everything happen. And so we congratulate everybody involved in the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12, consider and take action to approve resolution adopting the Harlingen Downtown Improvement District 2013-2014 fiscal year budget.
As I mentioned before, the Harlingen Downtown is one of those funds that is adopted by resolution, and you have that before you. There's an Exhibit A, which lists the revenues and the expenditures. Revenues totals $240,975, and expenditures $234,263.
Is there a motion to approve the downtown improvement district budget?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Does this have to be by our, does this have to be by our?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Great. Item 13, consider and take action to enter into a cooperative interlocal working agreement with the City of Brownsville, Texas, which was awarded grant funds totaling $2,257,290 in Southwest Order and Money Laundering Alliance through a joint effort specifically to fund the Financial Asset Seizure Team. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. In short, our item is exactly that. What we want to do is assign two of our investigators to, what they're termed, the FAST team, the Financial Asset Seizure Team, to target money laundering initiatives. In short, this agreement will allow them to reimburse us in full for salaries, credit benefits, overtime, and they are also going to provide the vehicles and equipment. Total's about $320,000 for us. That's our portion of the grant, and I see no reason not to do it, so that's why I'm here.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agreement?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All right, and plus, it'll be a good thing to, to do some police work on. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 14, consider and take action to approve resolution accepting Valley International Airports adopted budget fiscal year 2013-14.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, the airport board voted during this last regular airport meeting to adopt the budget containing the packet. I'd be glad to just hit on the highlights, and then if you have any specific questions regarding the numbers, I'd be glad to try to answer those for you. For next fiscal year 2013-14, we are expecting revenues at $64,439,500. The operating expenses before depreciation are expected to be at $5,817,157. The net income before depreciation, $622,343. On the capital expense budget, we have a total of $123,000 budgeted for various pieces of equipment to be acquired during the next fiscal year. The capital improvement budget totals $3298,500, and that includes improvements to the airport terminal building, new job bridges, flight information display, access control, air handlers, and some other AIP projects. Cash flow, we expect to begin next fiscal year with a total of $5250,000 in the bank. And at the end of next fiscal year, we expect to have a balance of $4142,343 in the bank. And the reason we see a decrease there is we have to upput the, the expense associated to our PFC projects, and then we reimburse ourselves as time goes on. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Sort of as a side note, I heard on the news late this afternoon that some, some country is expanding their service to Harlingen.
That's correct. They started actually this past Sunday, so that's a month earlier than they started last year, so we're very happy about that.
Okay, are there any other questions? Is there a motion to approve a resolution accepting the Valley International Airport budget?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Also want to congratulate the, your staff, Michael, and your board for what you do out there at the airport, and making this an easy call for us, because of the well-managed and financially well-managed operation out there at the airport. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 15, consider and take action to approve my resolution, the acceptance of an anticipated Federal Aviation Administration grant, offer number 3-48-0101-055-2013, approximately $3,643,269,000 to rehabilitate runway 17R/35L, mill and overlay, rehabilitate taxiway J overlay, remove taxiway K, purchase of ARFF vehicle and conduct wildlife hazard plan at Valley International Airport.
Thank you, Mayor. All of these projects were included in this current fiscal year budget for the airport. The airport board has approved this grant, and has recommended that the city commission also approve it, so that the mayor can execute it. I do need to make one correction on the enclosed resolution. In the third, whereas, it has totally, the total estimated cost at $3,643,269, and that should read $4,500,000. That's the amount of the grant, $3,643,269. So, other than that, the resolution's fine.
Repeat, what should the number be?
Okay, the number should be, the total estimated cost for those projects, it's $4,500,000. With the grant covering $3,643,269.
Okay, very good. This will be for improvements, continue to make our airport the best airport in the valley.
And for benefit of the public, what's an ARF vehicle? ARFF?
ARFF stands for Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting Vehicle. It's the fire trucks that we have stationed at the airport. We are, we have two trucks today. We're replacing one truck this fiscal year, and another truck next fiscal year. The bid that we received is approximately $800,000 to replace that truck, and it's state-of-the-art, so that we are prepared, along with the City of Harlingen firefighting department, we're going to be prepared for any accidents that happen out there.
And this is year after year, we're able to secure these FAA grants to really keep our airport in the best condition possible. And so if, over, over a period of years, it's literally millions and millions of dollars that are being invested in that great asset that we have.
That's correct, Mayor.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I've been asked to get down to our executive session, we're taking up item 17, sorry, 16. So, item 18, close executive session on the following items, pursuit of chapter 551, subject to the UPTCA here with co-section 551.071, consultation with the interim city attorney and route side, Leewood Council to seek Leewood advice regarding City of Harlingen, Texas versus Union Pacific Railroad Company, Area Valley Switching, file number 2011, CCL 115, county court law number two, and City of Harlingen versus Theater Castle Productions, limited cost number 2009, 4744, 445th District Court, and pursuit of chapters 551.071 and 087 regarding financial information and a potential economic prospect known as Project Hope, about which the city is seeking, if found a fully worthy financial economic incentive. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the city commission is going to go meet with their attorneys to discuss matters in executive session. We're going to be going in the back room there, and we will be coming out and taking action after the executive session. Okay, we're out of executive session now at 6:58. Still have a forum, so. Good, item 16, consider and take action to approve a resolution accepting Harlingen Waterworks Systems adopted budget for fiscal year 2013-14.
Thank you, appreciate this opportunity to, before you have a really quick, basically for having any questions. First thing is, I'd like to thank the, the board trustees, and to remind the public and all customers that the board trustees are customers, that by charter, the Harlingen Water Works is administered by five customers. This is our current utility board trustees, and we're very blessed to have these, these gentlemen dedicating their time and talents to, to operating the Water Works. Again, the trend I show every year that, and with current year, this is, just shows the consumption over trend and customer base. But basically, this summarizes, in the past 10 years, the past decade, we've increased about 15, increased a 15% in customer base, but we have a decrease in water demand of about 20%. So conservation works. We still promote conversation, conservation, and still expand on the continued, that use. But there's this expectation that as the city grows, there's going to be a shortage of water. We're using less water now than we did 20 years ago, even though we have 15% more, more customers. The, again, going through, getting to the numbers, what we're projecting proposed budget in revenues for coming year, water revenue, $9 million approximately, wastewater, $10 million others, and so approximately $19.7 million. Our cash out, basically, are operating costs in personal services, contractual service supplies, et cetera, at $15.4 million. So that's an up of $4.2 million. So strictly on operating costs, we're doing good. We can operate what we have well. The, the shortcoming, of course, is in capital. We will point out, though, that in increases for this year, personal services, going from $6.6 million to right at $7. This is for mainly health insurance increases, one D position, and raises for employees. A little differently, what we opted to do was $100 per month per employee, or basically $1,200 for each employee. Being the Water Works in operations, we have quite a large number of lower-income employees. And with the advent or increase in the health insurance, family health insurance cost, we thought this would look more easily offset that to them. So basically, everyone gets, it's not a percentage, everyone just gets the same amount, and so it's a higher percentage for the lower-income employees, a much lower percentage for the higher-income employees. The capital cost, our contractual services, there's an increase here principally because the irrigation district has increased their, their cost to us of transporting our water in an amount of $200,000 per year. And there's reason justifiable in doing that. We also have some TCU state fines and penalties that have to be voted in because of the deterioration of our wastewater plant. Get into more detailed information on the schedule of revenues, we'll, we'll show that the current year, the only thing outstanding or different in this is lease of water rights. This year, we're probably going to end the year at approximately $150,000 of revenue in lease of water rights. We show future years of zero. If it rains next year, there will be no leasing of water rights. So being conservative, we don't, we don't predict or project that we will lease water rights. But this year, we did have quite a bit of, some water that we did lease to, to other cities. The, the board trustees went into a good bit of discussion about possibly considering elimination of impact fees in the future. We did not do that, but that's going to be, continue to be an item for discussion. But we are predicting right at a little $400,000 in impact fee revenue, because we are still adding about 150 to 200 customers, you know, per year, and those impact fees associated with that. That's basically the, the highlights, or basically the ups and downs. I'd be happy to stand for any questions you might have.
All right, is there a motion to consider, take action to approve resolution accepting the Waterworks Systems budget?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, I want to thank you and your board for all the hard work that you do in, in getting it, getting us to this budget, and we'll be talking to you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Gerald. Item 17, our board appointments.
Mayor, I have one, the honest, pass that to the Harlingen Proud Advisory Board.
And I have Bud O'Rear, who I thought I had already done, but it's showing that it hasn't been done, to the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and then the Harlingen Proud Advisory Board. Tom Allen.
And I have Rebecca Rios, to the Harlingen Proud Advisory Board, keep Harlingen beautiful. Is there a motion to accept the board appointments?
So moved.
Your second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 19, consider and take action to approve payment to Union Pacific Railroad Company, Area Valley Switching Company, and Area Valley Railroad of the award by special commissioners in the amount of $232,000, the amount of the award of $250,000 less credit for $18,000 previously paid for acquiring an easement to extend Dixieland Road across the railroad tracks parallel to US Highway 77 for public access to Spur 54, Bass Pro Shops, and businesses located along the US Highway 77 in the area of the US Campus Crossing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 20, consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending the City of Harlingen 2012-13 budget.
This is amendment number two for fiscal year 2012-2013. This budget amendment allocates $380,000 as a grant match for the Jefferson Drainage Project. It allocates some unspent funds from fiscal year 2011-2012, and they were brought over to this year, and they were unspent. The summary that you have, that you have before you lists, H Fund, general fund revenues increase $618,880, expenditures $637,880. Special Investigation Fund expenditures decreased by $1,411. The Neighborhood Stabilization Fund revenues decreased by $55,957, and expenditures decreased by $55,957, which is a wash. FEMA Jefferson Spring, revenues increased by $380,000. The TDRA Northwest Area Drainage Fund revenues increased $24,927, and expenditures decreased $24,927. HCIB Fund, we have expenditures increasing by $315,000, and those are expenditures that were approved at the last joint meeting. Debt service expenditures increased by $56,588, and Sentation Fund expenditures increased by $1,411. Exhibit A shows all those changes, and then Exhibit B itemizes each of the transactions. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this amendment.
City Attorney, can you read the caption, please?
An ordinance amending the revenue and expenditure budget for the City of Harlingen, Texas for the fiscal year October 1st, 2012 through September 30th, 2013. Total budget revenues will decrease to $66,027,34, and total budget expenditures will decrease to $66,338,753 respectively, providing for publication of the caption of this ordinance, ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 21, assess the litigation. First person we have signed on is Priscilla Alvarez.
My name is Priscilla Alvarez. I am the Director of Program Services at VITA, Valley Initiative for Development and Advancement. The individuals standing behind me are Harlingen residents, they're TSTC students, and they are VITA participants. They are here in the hopes that the city of Harlingen and the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation reconsideres its position to zero out its monies to VITA. VITA serves the adult economically disadvantaged residents of Harlingen in their quest for self-sufficiency. 68% are on public assistance at or below national poverty levels. VITA graduates earn an average of $35,000 a year. These individuals can support their families and they can shop, they can pay taxes, they can buy cars, and they can replenish the city's coffers. Your investment in these individuals grows your economic base. It is economic development. Harlingen has been a leader and a very vocal proponent of education in Texas. These individuals behind me are doing exactly what they say, what we say needs to happen. They're getting your post-secondary credentials so that we and you can recruit quality companies. We respectfully ask that you not continue to develop strategies and budgets based only on what you can give a company to come to Harlingen, but to continue investing in your human capital so that these companies want to come. Higher educational attainment, higher per capita income, and greater number of rooftops, that is what catches businesses' attentions, that is economic development. Again, we ask that you please continue to help with VITA's funding. We have 46 individuals, 46 families whose ability to break the cycle of poverty rests on their ability to get to graduation. We cannot do it without your funding for fiscal year 13-14. In addition, we have 69 individuals on the waiting list to start college. Please do not ignore that human capital is as much a part of your recruitment strategy as buildings, land, and tax deferred. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next person, thank you all for coming, and we thank you all for coming. The next person on the list is Buena Lupe Ramirez. Mrs. Ramirez.
Buenas noches, no sé quién me puede interpretar. ¿Hay alguien que interprete?
Yes, sir. Will someone translate for Mrs. Ramirez?
Spanish speaking people, okay?
I can try.
You want me to go over there, Mr. Ramirez? My name is. [inaudible] Buenas noches, este señor mayor y todos los comisionados, mi nombre es Lupita Ramirez.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Lupita Ramirez.
You're mayor, you're the mayor. Este, mi razón que estoy aquí es que tengo un building que me dieron 60 días para que lo compusieran o, o lo, o lo tumbaban, o ponían un lien, ah, no, que, que es lo que quieren hacer, pero yo les dije que yo no tenía dinero.
The reason why I'm here is because I have a building and they asked me to demolish it or to repair and they gave me 60 days to do that.
Y yo quisiera saber verdad que si, que hoy en día quedan grants, quedan loans, este, y yo quisiera que de alguna manera o de otra me trataran de ayudar.
And I would like to know if there's any grants or any resources after that you could help me.
Y también, este, nuestra gente necesita mucha ayuda, este, hay mucha gente que no tiene trabajos, viviendas, salud, y yo quisiera que si se puede hacer algo por nuestra gente que trataran de hacerlo porque están muy necesitados aquí, en este pueblo.
And also our people need a lot of jobs, they're not healthy and anything you can do for our community or our people would be appreciated.
Así es que les pido de favor a todos que si me pueden ayudar en algo, quisiera que me ayuden.
I'd like you please consider this.
And we can't discuss the item because this is just public comment and it's not on the agenda for discussion, but we have heard what you had to say and we will ask the staff to communicate with you about what your options are.
Okay, pues muchas gracias.
Direction, por favor, if you could give us your prayers.
La división es, este, 804, North Commerce, la división del lugar.
De su casa.
Business.
De su casa.
De la casa.
Direction de su casa.
El de mi casa es cuatro, 825, to, to, to Harlingen.
Okay, gracias.
Thank you.
All right, next on the list is Joe Rubio.
For the record, Jose Rubio Jr., coming through and hanging on the road. Want to bring an item to your attention, which is what Commissioner Michael Mesmore and Commissioner Victor Leal put on the agenda. Looks like, to me it looks like they chickened out today and didn't want to discuss the attend item. Says discussion of possible pay increase for non-civil service employees. And I'm really disappointed in both of these commissioners that they don't want to, that they're going to wait 13 months to discuss an issue that is important. The budget has just been passed, you're going to wait 13 months to discuss an issue such as pay raises. Mr. Gunn here proposed $100 across the board for all the employees, which made it fair. You're proposing a 3% across the board. You upped the insurance rates for employees, so a person who's making $85,000, $86,000 is going to get over a $3,000 pay raise. And there's employees here that are making way over that amount. There are some employees that are making $50,000, $80,000, but you can calculate the math that at 3%, the person who's not making any money, he's going to, he's not, he's not going to be, be able to offset the high in insurance cost. So $3,000 pay raise versus $1,000 maybe max, wrong completely. You also have a balance in your budget of approximately $14 million more or less, depends on what's coming up. You could have lowered the property rate, the property tax rate by nine cents, real easy because for every penny is, is, is $275,000. The standard is to keep in reserve 25%, so you have about $4 million to play with and for the, this commission to inform the public that they, that they, that they have no money, there's no due diligence. Mr. Leal and Mr. Mesmore, you promised through your expertise when you got voted in that you were going to do something for the community, that you were going to use your expertise. Mr. Yulhorn, I expect the same thing from you because you are a business person and you understand the reality. I won't be able to talk about the other issue because I'm out of time, but thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And that concludes our meeting. Thank you, everybody. Good night.